Meeting of the school committee, its regular session. At this time, we'd ask that you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time, we'd ask that we observe a moment of silence for our troops serving overseas. Thank you and good evening. Before beginning, we'd like to recognize some new members to the school committee who will be sitting as of January. During the recent election, Myra Ortiz from District A won her election and Giovanni Rodriguez in District D won his.
Oh, yeah. Come on down and shake our hands. Benicca.
Rodriguez is welcome to sit at the panel, although he cannot participate until January, but he's welcome to sit with this august group should he so choose.
And listen, you're the boss, not really. Okay.
Congrats.
He's an O.
I would say with each new election, some members come and some members go. At our next meeting in December, we will carve out time to celebrate the input and service of both Mr. Vittorioso and Mr. Cirillo, who are moving on to greener pastures perhaps.
Oh, definitely.
But are always welcome back in there. So please make sure, if you can be here, to be here for that December meeting as we will take time out of the schedule to recognize their work. We appreciate that. Onto the update. I'd like to begin to talk about the Breen School Playground. Work began today to rip out some of the older school equipment in that playground that's falling apart. Some of the equipment that is in good condition is going to remain, and to that, we're going to add a brand-new playground. That work will happen over the next week or two. We're excited that the PTO is able to raise significant money to help that. The district has also kicked in some funding for that, and we are having folks from inside the district work on setting that playground up. This, I think, is going to be a model for us going forward. We believe that we need to have more open space for our children to play at, and much like we did at the Bruce last year when we were able to rehab the gym inside the school with the help of Mr. Cirillo and some other folks on this board and the Boston Celtics, we want to continue to upgrade our facilities and our play space for our kids. So with that said, the Breen School work is about to begin. We're going to be updating you in the current year on more work. We're going to do a more comprehensive plan, so you will see a schedule on the new work that's going to take place in the future rather than us just updating you as work gets completed. A second item on our agenda is we had our first teacher-leader cabinet meeting last week where, as you know, teachers, over 100, were selected from across the district -- thank you -- to participate in this new program that allows teachers to have more voice in the running of the school district, aside from getting to know each other at that meeting and spending a great deal of time talking about teaching and learning, and particularly the idea that task predicts performance, or, to put another way, what we ask kids to do will determine how well they do. And the idea that some of the more basic rote work needs to be swapped out with more comprehensive, higher-order thinking where kids are forced to work together in groups and produce great outcomes. It was the focus of that session. We will have another session coming up in the next few weeks. Any school committee member who would like to attend is welcome to do so, and I think you'll hear more about that from the teachers in question. And remember, the teachers who were selected, over 100, will be given a stipend to do this work for us this year, and will be given this additional leadership opportunity, which I think is pretty unique in the state of Massachusetts as far as giving teachers' voice into what's happening on the ground. My belief has always been that kind of teachers are the front-row people, the people in the trenches who know exactly what's going on in their schools, and we haven't had an avenue to give them a voice in the past that we probably should, and so this cabinet is for that.
Jeff, just one quick question if I can interrupt you. How many teachers make up this cabinet, and how often do you plan on meeting?
Okay, so the teachers, there's, I think, 105 total teachers were selected this year. We will be meeting on a monthly basis, where I will be working personally with this cabinet. They also will be expected to do a project in their school to demonstrate teacher leadership that could take on any numbers of forms based on a discussion with the principal or the administration and other teachers in the building about what they want to do. I think backstopping this is the idea that if you're a teacher, oftentimes you have nowhere to go but continue to be a teacher, and there's not a lot of opportunities to kind of demonstrate leadership without having to jump and become an assistant principal or a principal. This is kind of an intermediary step between that, where teachers can take on additional leadership roles inside their school beyond the classroom. And I think if you talk to the teachers, I think they'd report that they're pretty excited about it.
Thank you.
Mr. Riley, sir.
Yes, sir.
Let me play devil's advocate.
I would expect nothing less, Mr. Vittorioso.
Not too many things. How are the principals going to react to this, that the teacher lead the cabinet, they're not on the same level as the vaunted principals, we know that, but can they make suggestions to the principals, and will the principals take heart at this, or will they dismiss them from underlings?
So, you know, I guess that remains to be seen. Our hope is that they will take the word from the teachers. When I was a principal of a school, I told people all the time, 90 percent of my job was trying to make the teachers' jobs easier. Schools should be about what happens in those individual classrooms, and so the people that are in those classrooms deserve our utmost respect and any kind of resources and support we can give them. My hope is that this will be a true collaboration between the principals and the teachers, but again, it remains to be seen, Mr. V.
Sir, are there any added gratuities for the teacher-leader cabinet?
Sure, there's an additional stipend that goes with that, absolutely.
May I inquire as to how much?
Say $5,000 stipend for the year.
Oh, I'll come right back. Come right back. They're making a lot of money.
You're coming back to join us in the classroom, Mr. Vittorioso?
No. No, the kids are a little bit -- what I've seen in the paper, when I think I'm a little bit leery about going into classrooms with children, but thank you for that answer.
All right, I appreciate it.
Mr. Riley, how are the teachers selected for this?
So there was a process by which teachers got the opportunity to apply online. There was a recommendation process. Principals had some input, but what we found was there were so many great teachers that applied that we actually accepted a cohort for this year, and we accepted part of a cohort for next year as well, because we want to make sure that as many teachers as possible have the opportunity to participate in this. I don't have the metric data on the acceptance rates and stuff, but that's something we can certainly get to you.
So is this like a yearly process?
It's every year.
You serve one year, and then next year, a whole group serves a different year?
That's correct. That's correct. We're trying to broaden the amount of teacher leadership impact in the district. I am not trying to create one specific small cohort of people that are going to do this work. I just don't really believe in that. I think that we have so many great people in this district teaching. In fact, I think there were some people, because of childcare and other issues, couldn't participate that wanted to, and so we are trying to think of ways to include them as well, because they weren't able to apply.
And, for example, if there's one teacher that's very good at the job and other teachers want them to stay on, is that possible? Like, are they term limited to only one term kind of thing, or?
I'm not sure we put term limits on it, but I have said consistently to the teachers and to central office here that I am interested in having a broad cohort of representation, to have a lot of people on. I recognize that there may be a case where people want to have people stay on, and if that works, great, but I also want to make sure that as many people have the opportunity as possible.
And was there any input from fellow teachers, like self-selection almost, like these are the teachers that we want to represent?
I think in some cases, what you saw was teachers recommended other teachers, and I think you can't get a more powerful recommendation than a colleague in the classroom saying that, "I think this teacher does amazing things with children and would be a benefit for this program." I think that probably carries the most weight of any kind of input when you look at a teacher's application, the respect of their peers. Thank you. I'm going to ask Mary Lou Bergeron to come at this time to talk about attendance. I think in your binders, you should receive an attendance report. We have a corrected page for you.
Good evening. We wanted to share some highlights of our attendance. You know, we've put a heavy focus on improving attendance across the board, and the principals have really put a lot of effort into coming up with new strategies to improve attendance. So you had, you received September's and October's attendance. There was one error on the October, and it was on HLC's monthly attendance. So you have the corrected version. But we wanted to share with you that as of the end of October, when we did our attendance for that month, we have 56 percent of our schools are at or above last year's attendance at this time, with an additional five days in the attendance count, and an additional 250 students that we're accounting for this year that were not enrolled last year. So their holdings very strong attendance. We have 12 of our schools are at 96 percent attendance or better. That equates to 38 percent of our schools. And if you go down to the 95 percent level, 21 of our schools are 66 percent of our schools are at 95 percent attendance or better, which is pretty much the state average, is around 95 percent. That gives you about nine days of absences over the course of the year for sicknesses or other family emergencies. We're up over last September's attendance by .9 percent at the high school campus, which is a big jump for high school. Right now, all but one of our high schools are at 90 percent attendance or better, and that one high school is at 89.4 percent, and trying to address some of the issues that they had over the end of last year and into this year to address that.
Which high school is that?
BMF. We know that last year's BMF numbers looked really good. We're questioning last year whether the attendance early on in the year was accurate, because it did go down over that time after the first month of school last year. So we believe this year's attendance is very accurate. And for those of you who've been here for a while, you know that our attendance at the high school, even within the last six or seven years, was in the low 80s to mid-80s. So they've really put a lot of effort into improving attendance and making sure students are coming regularly, with a high of 95 percent at HLD, and the low being 89.4. So they've really made a lot of effort in improvement. Our overall system attendance from one month to the next, from September to October, has gone up .3 percent. I know that sounds like a small amount, but it takes a large number of children to get that .3 increase to make that happen. And I can tell some of the strategies, because we talk all the time about what are you doing to make this happen? Many of our schools have instituted school-based attendance panels, where they're meeting regularly with families and students when they start to approach that third, fourth day, to see what's happening, to see if they need to put some new interventions in place. They're doing a lot of calling for families, but this year, it's not just the office or the robocall. They're asking teachers to call their students and really have that conversation so the students know it's not just the administrator that's checking on me, but it's the classroom teacher wondering where I am and when am I coming back, because it's important that I'm present every day to get my academic work done. They're doing a lot of the lower grades, a lot of competition and incentive work. A lot of them are doing like the award for the perfect attendance for this week, or the highest attendance is an award that goes on your door, or they're having a party at the end of the month for the grade level that has the best attendance. So we're seeing a lot of that happening within the schools, and kids are responding well to that and keeping active and making sure their parents are getting them to school on time. Along with our attendance, our dismissal rates are holding pretty low, even though we had a bad spell of respiratory infections over the last two weeks in October. Our dismissals have been very low and are remaining at good pace, so that we're not seeing kids going home regularly and missing a lot of school time. So we wanted to share with you. We did also do, we break out our attendance by grade structures. So if you want to know, at our elementary levels, our attendance overall is 96.5 percent. So that's all your elementary and middle schools. At our four early childhoods?
What was it again?
96.5 percent. At our early childhood schools, the four schools, they're at 94.3 percent. Now, I know that doesn't sound great, but when you're talking preschoolers and kindergarteners who maybe the first time they're in school, and you know they're going to catch every bug or virus that comes along, that's really good attendance for that grade structure. And at our high school levels, if you include just the high school campus, is at 92.2 percent, and when you add in all the alternatives, they're at 88.4. So we know that we have two alternative schools who are working with our most challenging students because of having dropped out, come back, overage. If we remove those two schools who are struggling at the 50 to 65 percent attendance, our overall attendance for the district would be a percentage point higher at 95.2 percent. So we know we've been watching those, those two schools, and the students who are coming regularly, their attendance is improving, so that the 80 or so students who might be a regular cohort are actually showing great attendance in the 80, high 80s in terms of their percentage. But they have a cohort of students who don't come on a regular basis, and that impacts their attendance overall.
I have a question. It's around health room visits and dismissals.
Mm-hmm.
I know you said that it was remaining steady, but in the sheet that we got, it looked like there was, again, I mean, I didn't have this in Excel, but just like a quick glance, it looked like dismissals were going up.
Well, you've gone up to 699 dismissals, but we also have 250 or so more students than we had last year at this time. So when you look at it overall, and the number of students compared to the actual dismissals, it's reigned pretty steady.
I think it's a good point, though, for Mr. Poirot. It also bears watching over the next few years as we've expanded the learning day, where, you know, in some cases, schools are going to almost 5:00, and at times, parents have had to pull kids out at 4:30 for a dentist appointment or what have you. We'll be able to do a better job of gauging that in the next few years after we've seen some data for three years in a row or more on a school day that is longer.
Okay. And just, I want to make sure I'm looking at the right sheet. Mine says 4:15.
Yeah, I had the Septembers here, too. So, yeah, you're 1,200 from last year and 1,415 for this year, so.
And sort of the same question for health room visits.
Mm-hmm.
It looked like just from, you know, last year, 18,000, this year, close to 22,000 health room visits. So it's just like people are getting more sick, or is it something?
We have had a lot, we have a lot of students who are taking regular medication. We have a large number of diabetics who have to visit the health room sometimes two, three, four times a day, before and after meals, after snack. So those all counts as visits, though they're not there very long. The nurses are working very hard to keep them there as short a time period as possible, and when they are there, they're reading. Their books are in all the nurses' offices, and they're reading while they're waiting for either the wait time they have to after they've taken their medication, or for the nurses to be able to check on them.
I just want to say, big picture, too, that this is, what we're seeing is more intensive medical conditions from our students coming into the district overall. Part of our strategy is we're in the process of bringing in some local health centers with physicians, because the need is so great to intensify our health services for kids. It's a little bit different than the model we had previously where we had kind of a nurse leader, but what we're seeing is so many pretty exceptional cases, some students with special needs. We feel that for the safety of our children, it's better to bring in some additional support and physician-led.
From, who are the partners?
We're, I don't know if I can say right now.
Well, right now, we already have a partner with, we have Northern Essex Nurses that come in, we have Salem State Nursing coming in, we already have one partnership with the Great Lawrence Family Health Center at Buffy School.
Yeah, but some of our local health centers, when those contracts get signed, we should be able to actually announce them at the next meeting. We want to make sure it gets all through the procurement process.
A question, Dr. Bergeron, it's not a pleasant subject, but I've received five calls talking about the tragedy that occurred in Danvers. Now, is there, maybe, Mr. Qualters, and you can answer it. After school, if a female teacher keeps a male student or vice versa, are they one-on-one, or does, Mr. Qualters, somebody go in the room with them? This was asked of me, and I haven't visited the high school in months, but to me, it's a cogent question, because what happened in Danvers could happen anywhere. So my question to you, Dr. Bergeron, and to Mr. Qualters, if a student is kept out of school by a male or female teacher, is there anybody that goes in there to watch for the protection of the teacher? And you know, a tragedy occurred, and I did receive four calls on it, and I said, "I don't know," but I will bring it up at the next school committee meeting. So my question to you, Dr. Bergeron, and to Mr. Qualters, if a student is kept out of school by a female or a male student, is there another adult in the room with this teacher and students?
I'm happy to. I think what we have, which is different from many other high schools, is that we have a full-time security force in place. As many of you know and remember from last year's meetings, we've been kind of ahead of the game as far as student safety, whether it's buzzer systems or staffing and whatnot. And what that means is we have, after school, until I want to say 8:00 or 9:00, uniformed security patrolling the schools, particularly at the high school. Now, are they sitting with each individual teacher? No, but they are walking continuously throughout the building in our presence that frankly other school systems just don't have.
Then you're telling me, Mr. Superintendent, that everything is copacetic, the teachers are safe, the students are safe, everybody's safe?
What I'm telling you is I believe we have a safe school system, Mr. Vittorioso. I think what you saw in Danvers is that these kind of things can happen anywhere, and what our job is to just try to reduce any chance of a negative event taking place. And I think by any standard, the Lawrence Public Schools is a pretty hard target. We've got some pretty serious safety and security measures put in place, and I would put us up against anyone in the Commonwealth.
What a difference from '58. We didn't have any guards when I graduated. I know before you and maybe Dr. Bergeron was born and this lady over here were born. We didn't have any of that. The kids were good, decent kids. The girls were, huh?
They still are good, decent kids.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm not talking your generation, I'm talking mine. You're a different generation, Mr. Vice Chair. So my question is, safety, safety, safety. And you're assuring me, Mr. Superintendent and Dr. Bergeron, there is safety in our schools?
We believe we have very safe schools, and I can guarantee you, we have great kids. But like all school systems in America, there are times when incidents happen, and we think we have, what we have put in place has reduced chances for those things to happen. But I don't have a magic, a crystal ball, and I can't tell you that we're not going to see an incident at some point. What I can tell you is we've worked diligently, and I would argue we are one of, if not the strongest in the Commonwealth around school safety.
Well, you know, you made a statement, I believe, back several minutes ago, that all our kids are angels. I kind of agree with that. We have some kids in there that are not angels, and these are the ones that threaten the good kids. And I know you, I'm not complaining, I think you're doing a marvelous job, but the point is, there are some loose cannons.
I think my point, Mr. Vittorioso, is, and you're right, certainly Dr. Bergeron wasn't born at the time, but when you and I grew up.
Oh, I'm way ahead of you.
Even when you and I grew up, there were some loose cannons, and it's always been loose cannons everywhere we've been. And so what I would say is, we've done some pretty substantial work, and frankly, a lot of work had been done before my arrival. There was a great security plan in place, and we've just kind of hardened those targets and added additional resources. But I think Lawrence has a strong plan going forward. But we recognize that, you know, there will be issues. That is part of what happens in society today and in the 1950s when you and I were kids.
I'm going to squeal. I was over eating at Wendy's, and there's still kids that are coming out from the high school. And I told you before, Mr. Superintendent, I will not engage these students, but you still, I claim there's still students coming out and going over for coffee and sandwiches. And God forbid, if one of them are hit.
Yeah.
It has to be tighter.
We will revisit that again, Mr. Vittorioso. I will just say that I am in agreement with you, that we need to make sure that our kids are in school. I would also say, however, that we've received several calls throughout the last year and a half asking for an open campus at high school, like many others, not many, I should say some other schools have, which I am vehemently opposed to.
I'm with you, sir.
Okay.
On the subject of school safety, I know we have protocols in place when things do happen, if they do happen, God forbid. And I know there was a lockdown recently of the last, could you just brief us on what happened and just?
Sure.
The follow-up that happened with it?
So we had, there were reports of shots fired in a neighborhood, and that kind of automatically triggers a response between the police department and us. Obviously, it was not on school grounds, but we still go into safe mode where we lock down the buildings, and we did that at the South Lawrence East Elementary School and the high school and the Breen, until the situation resolved. Obviously, police swarmed the area and determined that the situation was safe. We went out of lockdown mode, and eventually, the students were dismissed for the day. But this is, you know, this is not a regular occurrence, certainly, but this is not an unheard-of occurrence either. And so the reason why we do these drills at the beginning of the year with the schools, whether it's the birdcage, shelter in place, lockdown, I mean, is because these situations can arise, and whether that's because of gunshots or a stranger reported in a building, these are things that we have to contend with. And I think Dr. Bergeron, actually, has done a great job of putting many of those policies in place before my arrival.
There was also, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Jimmy Nianga.
One more point on that. There was a situation that happened at, not at the Partham, but across the street from the Partham, there was a raid of some kind on a house on Election Day, and the school wasn't locked down?
We have a meeting with the police department to discuss that. I had an initial phone call with Captain Driscoll about that today, and we'll have more information for you at the December meeting. A lot of times, it's about when the information is given to us and what happens. So this is, you know, we had an incident in an open house one night with somebody in a window where parents were engaged in the classroom. So these things are not regular, but they're not uncommon, as I said before, and we try to treat each one seriously. In regards to the most recent one, I mean, connected phone calls were sent home to parents, and, you know, we really try to get the information out so the parents know that their children are safe.
Follow-up to Mr. Blaster's comments. First, thank you for asking that. I think that was going to be my question. I think it might be important, because at the day of, I got three calls asking what was going on, and all I could tell them was what I was reading in the paper. So it'd be great, I know maybe that same day would be a little difficult since you guys are dealing with the problems, but at least a day after, that way we have some type of information to give to parents besides by the Eagle Tribune. So it'd be great, any type of, you know, major action like that, that we're informed sometime afterwards.
We absolutely will do that.
Thank you.
Mary Lou, I just have a quick question about the High School Learning Center and the Phoenix Academy. What are some of the strategies they're putting into place to improve that attendance? I know it's a difficult population, but it significantly impacts the district, and what, you know, what are they trying to do?
I know at the High School Learning Center, they put together a team that is actually calling every student that is not in school every day to find out what's going on, are they staying enrolled, what's the process? Come in late, if you just didn't wake up on time, get here, we'll make up your time. They're doing a lot of work with students and doing individualized planning with them about contracts for attendance and commitment to the programs. Many of those students are overage, they are working and juggling school and work, and sometimes those things are not intersecting well, so they're trying to adjust as much as possible for individual student cases to allow them to be in school when they need to be.
Have hours been adjusted for these students that have to work?
That's the piece the High School Learning Center is working on for some of those students. They may not come the full day, but they may come for their core subjects, they're trying to get their degree and finish off certain content. Phoenix has a different model, so they've stayed pretty true to their model in terms of their attendance procedures, though they are trying to build up their numbers to make sure that they have kids coming regularly, so.
Okay, thank you.
Pat, I'd also like to say, you know, I think when we brought in some of this programming, particularly at Phoenix, and brought some of the students back, we recognized that attendance could be an issue. We just felt like we had a moral obligation to get our kids off the streets and try to get them through high school with a diploma so that they could become, you know, productive members of society. With that, sometimes, we've got some kids that have some tough issues, and we accept that, and, you know, attendance is something that is going to be a constant battle there. And I know at Phoenix and HLC, they've also talked to DSS and DYS, they're working with the courts, the mental health centers, the daycare centers for the teen moms. I mean, it's really been a collaborative effort to try to improve and to stay on top of a child's attendance so that we can get them through high school. But this is, this is some of the toughest work that's going to be done in the district. The alternative, of course, is we could have much better attendance than we have tonight. We could as a district if we chose to let those kids go, but I just don't think we can do that.
It would pay on the other end in the dropout rate, so.
You know, I always thought these schools, I did my practice teaching in New Mexico, and this school, West Las Vegas High, when a kid worked, they put that on his report card. Jeff Riley, Cook, Attica. Jeff Riley, Cook, Ateca Restaurants, Jim Vittorio's Custodian. They put this on his rec, and it's important, because if these kids aren't academically As and Bs, I, as an employer, were looking to say, this kid works. That means something. He or she is working, because the family needs their income. They should be on the report cards, something that John Jones works down here or something. They should get some sort of recognition. They're trying to go to school and working to help out their families. Something should be done, Mr. Riley, to show the initiative, they're helping out their families.
So, Mr. Vittorio, so, I completely agree with you. We're not there yet, we haven't got that off the ground, but I think the idea that students should be given credit for hard work is something I believe in and something that we could probably make happen in the next few years, so.
See, we're not that far apart.
We're a little bit apart, but not that far apart, Mr. Vittorio.
Not that far apart, a hand span.
Mr. Riley, a question about Phoenix attendance again. Do you think, does a dip have anything to do with the fact that they moved to a different building? Or is it like, maybe they have more students?
So, you know, I'm not sure, I would think that it's in a more centralized location, so that the attendance would actually be better, because, you know, so where they were before...
Looking at these numbers, just, I mean, me and Mr. Cirillo, we went to Phoenix, we did, you know, we did a tour, and it seemed like they were doing some great things. So I thought that by moving to this new building, there'd be a new energy, so it's surprising that it's actually, attendance has gone down.
I mean, I think some of it may also be, they have a particular model where if kids don't show up, they sit them down and don't let them come back for a little while, and then they get to restart at the beginning of the next quarter, so that hurts their attendance. They're almost playing, I don't want to call it a game of chicken, but just a recognition like, this is a privilege, this is not a right to be here. I mean, we worked hard to get you back into the street, and if you're just showing up once a week, that's not going to work for us. So that may be part of it, but I think it bears watching. You know, we've spent a considerable amount of money to invest in a building for them, and we want to make sure that they're being as successful as possible.
Right.
I think we might benefit more if the principal, the head person of Phoenix, come and talk again about their program.
Sure, I think...
How it works and if it's not working, because like, as Poviano said, moving to a centralized office downtown, they should have been increasing in attendance. So that has something to look at.
We can certainly bring folks from the Phoenix here to this group. I would also say that we will be bringing new leaders into the, to meet with the school committee, as has been past practice, so that you know who are running the different buildings, as we did have some changes in leadership in other places as well.
They also meet one last day out of the week, too, don't they?
Say that again?
Don't they meet Monday through Thursday instead of Monday through Friday?
Half-day on Friday.
Half-day on Friday, okay.
Yeah. But they go longer for that Monday to Thursday, right? They're almost going to five o'clock.
Nine to five.
Nine to five, so that's, it's a longer school day. They're not missing any hours, and that allows some kids to do the work starting Friday afternoon early.
They also have daycare facilities.
They do, there's a facility onsite. So, you know, we built them a building, we've got a daycare facility onsite, we've worked really hard to give the school what they needed. Clearly, we've got some work to do around attendance.
I mean, these kids also go through phases. I mean, they do graduate out, there's new kids who come in who've never been in this situation before. So it does change year to year, I think, a little more than our regular high school.
I think that's a fair statement. It's a pretty transient population, and we put this in place because, you know, the city of Lawrence had a pretty low graduation rate. We felt like there were a lot of kids on the streets that weren't being productive, and we felt like we could recapture them. And I think we're, we are recapturing many of them. I think when kids, because they're kids and they develop at different times, a lot of kids are being successful there. I think some kids aren't, and maybe they will be six months from now, and that, you know, changes as kids change. But, you know, it's certainly something that we want to watch closely, as this is kind of a new program that we have in the Lawrence Public Schools.
I think for, better for our clarification, can we get a breakdown by grade attendance? Just to see like which, like which grade is attending better, so if it's like the seniors that are doing as well, that are pulling down the numbers really bad?
That won't be a problem.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Actually, could you do it for HLC as well?
You got that down?
Yep.
Okay, I'd like to bring up, thank you, Dr. Bergeron, I'd like to bring up Mr. Malino at this time to talk about some facilities issues. As you know, facilities is an ongoing battle we wage here in the Lawrence Public Schools as we set out to fix our buildings and make sure they are great educational institutional institutions for our kids. Mr. Malino and his team have done yeoman's work to fix the buildings, and he's here today to perhaps show you a video?
Brief video.
A brief video and to talk about some of the things that are happening in the schools. Is the video coming first?
Yep.
Oh, the video is first.
You put the lights out.
Hang on, we pulled the plug.
Another glitch.
Let's begin by talking about the Oliver Partnership School. Projects completed. Plastering of ceilings. Painting of classrooms, hallways, bathrooms, staircases. Flooring, hallways and staircases replaced. Plumbing throughout as needed. Furniture, new furniture for students and staff members. Bathroom partitions. Radiator covers in classrooms and hallways. Pipe insulation. Gym floor refurbished. Gym padding. Repointing of the exterior. Next building project, school for exceptional studies at the Annex. Installation of sign. Painting of the exterior and interior. Windows throughout the building with security screens. Bathroom partitions. Fencing. Tree removal. Door replacement, boiler replacement, video intercom, concrete stairs. At the Adult Learning Center, painting of the interior. Carpet replacement. Plastering, painting of ceilings throughout the Adult Learning Center. Upcoming projects as follows. Adult Ed roof replacement, painting of the exterior. Masonry work at the Wetherby and North Common Education Complex. Hot water tank replacement at the Allerton School. Cheer lift for the school for exceptional studies. Painting at the Frost School. Painting at the Leahy School. Painting at the Brew School. Playground installation at the Breen School. We'll keep you updated as projects are completed.
So now, any questions for Mr. Malino and his staff?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Riley. Where's all this money coming from? I know people don't work for none unless you're on the Lawrence Public School Committee, but where is this money coming from?
So what I would say is, a lot of the money is from efficiencies we've saved in the budget, some of the money is from the reductions of the central office here. As many of you know, we cut the size of central office by nearly one-third, saving almost $2 million, and we've been putting that money back into the schools for things like fixing buildings, a longer school day for our kids, textbooks, things like that. I mean, we've really, there's no additional funding that has taken place inside the Lawrence Public Schools, so we've had to do it internally inside of our own budget. And we're just trying to be as efficient as possible, recognizing that if we do not fix these facilities, that what could be a million-dollar problem this year could turn out to be a $10 million problem in three years. And so we're really trying to stay on top of things and have a long-term plan to make sure that we don't fall behind the wayside.
Mr. Malino, I'm going to make a statement, I want you to tell me if you agree with it or not. The better the school facilities, the better performance by its students. Would you agree with that, or would you not want to answer it? In other words, I'm saying, the prettier the school is, the students tend to be more aware and more productive.
It's important to keep a safe, healthy learning environment. You know, previously, we may have had some roof leaks, so it's good to fix all this stuff to preserve the buildings from getting worse.
That's not the question, Chris. The question is, that you, all these buildings you're putting up, does it increase the learning ability of the students in these new remodeled schools, in your opinion?
My opinion, yes.
Oh, boy, you're a good politician, young man, a damn good politician.
Let me put it another way, perhaps a more nuanced way, Mr. Vittorio. My children go to school in Boston, and the building is not a newly remodeled building, it's a building from the 1900s. And it's not particularly pretty, but it's kept up. And it doesn't have all the bells and whistles, but it's clean. And it doesn't have the sensor flush, but the toilets work. And there's doors on the toilets. And so I think you have to have a minimum standard where kids can go to school. And after that, I think a lot of the work is about what happens in the classroom with the teachers and the principal. But I think what we've found is, we've had some schools that have been below that standard, and that was not acceptable. And that is a lot of what this work is about, as well as kind of the long-term foundational work that we've got to do now, or five years from now, you would have ticking time bombs on your hands for a much larger price tag.
Oh, I agree, and I think you're doing a marvelous job, Chris, don't get me wrong. I think you're doing a marvelous job. But my question was, do better facilities improve the aptitude of the students?
I think, I think you could rephrase that.
Oh, go ahead, please, Mr. Vice Chair.
Which is, do worse facilities, like bad facilities, make, make teaching a student harder? And I would, I would say yes. If there's wires all over the place...
I would agree with you, Mr. Vice Chair, I would agree with you, but you also must agree, Mr. Vice Chair, that they're spending millions of dollars, I see the people painting and doing that, I have no abilities, I won't go there. If I want to paint the place, I would screw it up. But I have no abilities when it comes to, and it's nice. I think when I taught at Mascanon for a year, that I was on the school committee, beautiful school they have down there, and the kids, but it wasn't the kids, the parents, the parents were always there. The parents are important in the child's education. I think the better school systems have parents like Andover, I have Andover, oh my God, Johnny's father comes in every other week to see how Johnny's doing, I'm getting disgusted with. Well, quit and go teach in Lawrence.
So, Mr. V, let me, let me say something about that. I think, you know, we don't have a ton of money to make a lot of these repairs. We've actually, we've actually enlisted some outside agencies like Boston Cares, who have donated, companies have come in and donated hours and materials and supplies and painting. You know, Jim and Pavel and others were part of the Lawrence Teacher Union Partnership School, and Frank, sorry Frank, anyone else painting? I mean, there were parents there. This is a, this is a community effort, and I think you'd be surprised by how many parents have been involved in helping us fix up these schools. And we have had donations, too, whether it's the Celtics doing the gym over at the Bruce, Boston Cares doing, what, they did Up Academy last year, they did the Leahy, I mean, we are maximizing both community and outside kind of organizations to help with this work.
I want to give myself a pat in the back.
Yes, sir.
In the last 12 years that I've been on, I've donated over $12,000 to Lawrence High School for scholarships. I doubt if anybody else in the city has done that.
That's a lot of money, Mr. V, we appreciate that.
I dig right into the bank, I go right into the bank for my salary, but I've donated over $12,000.
We're going to be looking for more this spring from you, Mr. V. I know you're off the school committee, but I'm going to be at your door.
You're more than welcome, I'll have a beer chilled.
Thank you, Mr. Vittorio.
Mr. Superintendent, if I could just, Chris, you know, I've been around for a long time.
A very long time.
All right, okay. And as an administrator in the schools way back when, that was a constant pressure on me as far as keeping up the schools and making sure that the schools were in a state where kids should be, and they should be able to use the bathrooms, and doors should be there. And I really have to say, I'm proud to see that finally, these buildings are bringing, are being improved. And I want to thank you for doing that. Because that really was something that really bothered me for years as an administrator.
I think to reiterate what she, Pat just said, Chris is going to be happy in two months when I'm no longer here and harassing him every other day about things that need to get fixed, besides Pavel and Jim's painting abilities, that they get so much credit for. Oh, and Giovanni. And Santos, too. I don't like to paint, so. But, and Mr. V, yes, if the kids are in better facilities, they have one less thing to worry about than having to, their own safety, the conditions of a building, which helps them more concentrate on them being able to learn. So with that, thank you for the hard work that you and your team have done, and getting these buildings up to good conditions. I mean, the Bruce Annex, Pavel and I visited about two months ago, and to my surprise, the conditions from where it was to where it is now is amazing.
It's a beautiful building.
I had a question about the repointing that went on at the Oliver.
Yes.
We had spoken briefly about it, and the problem was that the water was coming into the building because it needed that work done. Is that work completely finished?
They have a week left at the Oliver. They started Saturday over at the North Common Education Complex. By next week, they'll finish the Oliver Partnership School, and what they do is, they take garden holes actually, and spray the building, and no water is infiltrated in, so it did work.
So, that being said, how many more schools need that kind of work?
Three more. We have the Tile Box, the Breen, and also the Brew School.
So our oldest facilities, in other words, okay. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Mr. Malino. I think we're going to end with MCAS data, so I'm going to, with your permission, take out of order and go to number six. Stefiana wasn't here at the last meeting, I think he had the prior commitment, but he was appointed to be a co-chair with Mr. Cirillo on the working group for the central office lease. As folks know, the lease is coming up, not this January, but the following January, which may seem like a long time away, but in municipal government is not. So I think what I would like to hear is a recommendation from a group led by some folks on this committee as to next steps and possible resolution to what we're going to do. Are we going to stay? Are we going to stay with less space? Are we going to move somewhere else? And I'd like to hear a recommendation from this group. Any questions about that, or do folks have?
General, I have a question after the vice chair is done.
I would say I feel like the next step would be for us to, for us to meet, because besides us two, I feel like there needs to be other individuals, especially from municipal government, involved in this conversation.
Sure, I think that'd be great. Yes, Mr. V?
I had said at a previous meeting when you were here, the lady over there and the superintendent of schools, as to these layoffs. To me, they have to be justified. When you take a job away from a person, I know you're trying to find a job, it's the hardest part of being an administrator, but... I'm trying to think, these people that were let go in the central office, have you found them any other assignments in the Lawrence Public School system?
So some of them did leave the central office and went back to teaching in the classroom.
Excellent.
Some went to other school districts, some of them moved out of state. I mean, there was a variety of things that happened. What I would say is, while I'm incredibly sensitive to people and their jobs, fundamentally, you know, obviously, I think what had been happening here wasn't exactly working, and we needed to do something different. And at the end of the day, while my job is certainly to support all members, adults that work in the school system, my responsibility is to the children of the school system. And I believe, and I still believe, and I think will always believe, that the resources are better spent at the school level and not in the central office. I think that the actual work happens at the schools, and if you're a principal, I think you'd rather have the resources than dealing with a larger central office.
The biggest public union in the world are the Teachers Union NEA and all the people who believe the children need a break. Yeah, they do, but don't kill us, the taxpayers who have no children, in the schools. And I've, as I've told you before, Mr. Superintendent, the only chance that these Lawrence kids have, 60% come from one family homes, and the home, the head of home is usually the mother. They're not going to make it if they don't make it in Lawrence Public Schools, and I think you're doing a hell of a good job at that. They need an opportunity, and this is their only chance of them getting self-sufficient. And I know, I know it's a hard job, I'm not going to take away from you, Lawrence is a hard job, and as I said, I'm going to say up here, three schools in your beloved Boston have fallen to level five. And I've... And I've seen that on television. So, I was ribbing you about that. It's nothing to be ribbed about. Five schools, and I realize they have four times the students that Lawrence have. But three of those schools have fallen to Level 5. Who's to blame? My buddy Manino, the acting superintendent of schools and teachers? Who's to blame when three schools fall to Level 5? That's my other question. And I was trying to make a joke of it, would you, but it's not a joke. It's not a joke when three schools in a school system that has around 66,000 students, three schools fall to Level 5.
Well, Mr. V, you know, I appreciate your comments. What I would say is, yes, my- I used to work in the Boston Public Schools for a long time. My children attend the Boston Public Schools.
And I'm sure they're doing well.
They're doing fine. But I stay out of Boston Public Schools politics. And I've got a lot to focus on here, and so my focus is here. And this is kind of a nice segue for us. What I can tell you is, we had no new schools fall into Level 4 status this year, much less Level 5. We had twice as many schools go up into Level 1 status. Our test scores, after years of decline in English, are up, both in absolute performance and growth, as are our math scores. In fact, the math scores are the highest this district has ever seen. I don't think it's beyond the pale to say we are one of, if not the most improved urban school district in Massachusetts this year, and maybe of any kind of district this year. So, the Lawrence Public Schools had a great year, a lot of hard work by teachers, parents, principals, people on the school committee. But we recognize there's a lot more work to do. And what we're going to talk about now is, you know, some of the things that we saw from the data and give people a chance to ask questions or respond to that, recognizing we are limited on time, and if we do have to, we will move some of this back to the December meeting as well, if people have additional questions.
Is there a hard copy for members?
I'm sure we can- yep, I'm sure we have one. I would say that we kind of debated, going back and forth, how much data to give folks. I think you can kind of be blown away by a sea of data. Anyone that wants to can certainly go to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's website and spend hours upon hours poring over the data, and people are- that's been up for a long time, and people are welcome to do that. We tried to give people a condensed version, kind of showing you what- English performance, math performance, and science performance from last year to this year, some big-picture things. By school, absolute performance is the CPI. SGP is the growth or improvement metric. And so that's kind of two ways that the state looks at it. And pretty much by any measure, we are up. We've got a long way to go. English Language Arts continues to be a tough nut for us to crack. We have shown improvement, more in growth than in absolute performance. And so we've got to recognize that. Mathematics, we had a much stronger year. I think we are, you know, the most improved city in Massachusetts on math. And I think that will continue. But English is something that we've got to continue to work on. So, I would caution people who think that one strong year is fixing the problem. I think we've got a lot more work to do, and I don't want to be overly optimistic about what we've seen after year one. With that said, we'll open up to any questions.
I think it'd be important to explain SGP and CPI. I know you've explained it before, but I had to go online and sort of do my own research to figure out exactly what it meant.
So, CPI, or Composite Performance Index, assigns points to kids based on where they score. If they score in warning, they'll get zero points. If they're in low warning, 25 points if they're in high warning. 50 points if they're in high needs- if they're in needs improvement. 70 and 100- 75 points if they're in high needs improvement. They get 100 points if they're in proficient or advanced, so there's no designation. And so each kid will get, you know, will get a score range. A 236 would be a high needs improvement, so they get 75 points. They then take all the kids together and average them up and come up with a school CPI, and then they do that for the whole district. So it's kind of an average of absolute performance. And I have to tell you, it's harder for me to say this verbally. I'm wondering if we should do a presentation so we can visually show it to people that are at home, you know, in the coming meetings, to describe that. That's absolute performance. Student Growth Percentile is a unique thing that's come out recently or in the last few years where you track how a kid improves or declines based on a similar group of kids. So let's say a kid was warning one year in English MCAS. He was needs improvement the next year, and then he went to proficient in his third year. He would be compared against other kids that had that same trajectory, warning one year, needs improvement one year, and proficient the next year. And then on the following year's score, one kid did really well. He went up to advanced. His growth would be considered high. Another kid went from proficient back down to warning. His score is compared to his cohort, he would be considered low. Typically, I think growth below 40 is something you want to look at. And above 50 means we're kind of closing achievement gaps, but continue.
So, how far do they track? Is it just one year, three years?
Yeah, so it's cumulative. So, in third grade, yeah, so you get no growth. You get no SGP in grade three. That's kind of the baseline where they start the kids. But in fourth grade, you'll get that data. So it'll be all through high school. They'll do that to 10th grade. But I think, again, I love this stuff, but I recognize that this is- it can be a little bit obscure. And I think maybe a presentation where we kind of lay it out in a more simple fashion with video that kind of shows it might be a better way to explain it to folks. But the simple way is that the CPI is absolute performance. What's your grade? SGP is a different way to look at it. How much are you improving? And in both calculations, this district has gone up in absolute performance in English and in growth in English, in absolute performance in math and in growth in math. And we may be- I haven't looked at the other districts in great detail, but we may be one of the few districts that actually hit almost every bar going forward this year. So, it's a very strong year. I couldn't be more proud of the teachers in the classrooms. That's where the work happens, and they really took to using data to try to figure out where kids were. We had kids who gave up their vacations in February and April to get extra help. We've tried to instill in them that hard work matters and that, you know, if you want to do better, you've got to work harder. And I think we saw over 1,000 kids give up their February vacation and their April vacation to try to improve. And those kids that did that program showed even more improvement than kids that didn't do the program. And so we're going to increase the size of that program this year. Obviously, with an expanded school day, we're even more optimistic. But I would say with the longer school day, we're not just about test scores. Test scores are important, but I think we've tried to say that there are enrichment experiences that kids need, whether it's getting on stage and doing a performance, or playing in the band, or being in an athletic contest, or learning to cook. These things are important, too, for a kid's development. And while they may not show up on the MCAS test, they are important for a kid going forward in life. And so we've used some of that time for those kind of activities, as well as the targeted intervention. A kid that needs extra help in math but is strong in English will get extra math help, or vice versa. So we've really tried to be targeted and personalized about how we're using this time.
Superintendent, do you know how the district fell in comparison to the other gateway cities?
So, as I said, I think we're- we've been gaining some pretty significant ground. We have people that will crunch that- those numbers, but we've already started moving up positions. We were basically at or near the bottom of the pack. We started to trend upward in both English and math. But that's, as I said, we've got a long ways to go. We want to be not just at the top of that pack, right? We want to be comparable to the state average.
Yeah, and I just want to say, I mean, I think- thank you for putting this together. Because I think when you look at just the MCAS data, you do see a trend that there's some slight increases all across the board. I mean, I think there's a couple of little places where there's like some decreases. Looking at this, you can kind of gauge a little bit better on how we're doing. And but even though that we're doing somewhat better, you know, I think it's important that, like, I'm looking at it. I'm- it's like, this is great, but you want more. Especially when we're looking at our sort of math scores in the middle schools. The specific question with the Frost Elementary School, I saw that their student growth went down. So I want, whether at this meeting or at the next meeting, just like an explanation why that happened.
Sure. I think the fundamental explanation is that we had a lot of teachers that went on maternity leave from that school. And I think when you lose a teacher and put in a long-term sub, you know, you may not have the same rigid focus on what the standards are. Doesn't mean there's bad teaching going on there. It just means that the focus on the standards that need to be addressed may not be as- done with as much fidelity. But it's something that we'll be watching closely. You know, I don't- I don't- I'm not aware of maternity leaves coming up in that school this year, but I want to say there was six or seven last year. There was a significant- five? Oh, five full-year maternity leaves. So I believe most of those people are back, and we should be in better shape.
And with MST, like, in this part, I got confused. The MST student growth. Like, it's low in math, but I didn't understand, you know, a school like MST, you know, when I go there, it seems like all the kids are taking pre-calc and taking all honors classes. So I was wondering what exactly that meant.
You know, I think we need to study some more what it went. But when I first read that and looked at the data, my assumption is, which is sort of backed up and corroborated by the data I've seen, is that sometimes when kids come into a school like MST with a math and science focus, and they've done so well early on in their careers, they're being compared against other incredibly high-performing kids. So it's harder to get a high SGP when you're already kind of performing high, if that makes sense. In some ways, it seems a little bit unfair, which is why I caution anyone from using just one metric to look at it. You have to kind of look at absolute performance and at growth and at trends as far as improvement. And I think, you know, what we've seen is, you know, there has been overall growth there. There has been improvement there over the last few years. But, you know, when kids at that level are being compared to other kids in other, perhaps wealthier communities, we've got to do better, right? I think we want to be above 50 is what, you know, kind of the targets I've set for people. I believe you always want to be above the curve as far as what's happening with growth.
Well, sir, I think, and I probably speak for everyone, congrats to the entire public schools. I think we're doing a great job when it comes to this, and hopefully, we just keep on growing, and the growth is higher than it is today.
Well, I appreciate that. I think, you know, it was a great opening salvo. I think this is, you know, the first stage of where we need to go. I think it puts to rest notion that our kids can't improve and our kids can't do well. But now, our ambitions have to be higher, I believe. And I know that people on this committee believe that our kids can and will do better. And so we just appreciate the support that you've all given us, and we're going to call on you for even more support. This is a crucial year for us. The hard part will be, not this coming year, but the following year when the state transitions out of MCAS, and we all have to learn a new assessment system, which will change all the rules. And then we're almost going to have to start from scratch. And we're going to give folks more information about that as it becomes available and comes forward. I know Pat knows a little bit about that movement. So, there's going to be some decisions that are going to have to be made in the next two or three years about how we transition to this new assessment, when we transition to this assessment, and what the implications are around materials and costs to go to this new assessment. So, I just want to foreshadow that. With that said, unless there's any questions, I'd like to move to public participation.
Actually, just two statements.
Oh, yes.
If- not for today, but if at the next meeting, we can be prepared. I know there was somebody that came up, someone from the public came up, was talking about textbooks at the high schools. So at the next meeting, if someone could just brief us on, you know, what's going on at?
Sure.
And I know that Mr.- I don't know if Mr. Cirillo wants to talk about it now, but I would like someone at the next meeting dealing with bullying policy. I'm interested to know in the past, like, few months, like, I've just talked into people. I've heard not of people bullying instances that happened within the last year, but things that happened at the high school, like, years ago, and it affected them, their study, affected them to drop out. So I just want to hear what we're doing now to sort of address bullying and how we're reaching out to the students to find out what exactly is going on.
We'd be happy to do that. I think it's something that requires constant vigilance. So, we'd be honored to be able to bring that before you in the future.
Thank you.
I would also remind folks that next- the next meeting will be the last meeting for both Mr. Cirillo and Mr. Vittorio So, so we will have a short recognition ceremony, so I hope everyone can make it.
I hope I can make it.
We hope you can make it, too. We have-
Also, an update on the Parent Welcome Center for the next meeting?
Parent Welcome Center, yeah. Absolutely. Any final comments? Okay. Moving to public participation, I see a- James Vittorio So is on the list.
That's me!
Yes.
That's all right, folks. Only one more meeting, and I'm gone.
And you're not going to come back and-?
Nah. You don't need me. You can do it alone. Oh, I have a paper I want to give to Mrs. Vittorio So. It's about my money. I'm worth $30,000. Thank you. I'll be up this evening. Good evening, my fellow Laurentians. Feliz Dia de Accion de Gracias, Buena Natali, Prospero Año Nuevo. Happy Thanksgiving, Merry Christmas, Happy New Years. To my many Prospect Hill friends and the Prospect Hill Betterment Association, thank you for electing me and re-electing me to six terms on this esteemed Lawrence Public School system. I enjoyed serving most of the time. To my fellow committee members, thank you, and I will miss each and every one of you. I think of all the school committees I've been on, you've been the most challenged. You have no power, but you work diligently. My hat's off to you. Happy holidays to you all and your families. Power corrupts absolute. Power corrupts absolutely. History 101. The colonists wanted to be separated from English rule. George III of England said, "No revolutionary war." Thank God we have no war here. Public education is the only chance most of Lawrence's children have to succeed in this most complex and cruel world. In closing, I told this to Mr. Riley. It's a joke, but it's no joke. In closing, three of Boston's schools have been labeled Level 5. Think, three schools? I know their students, they number around 65,000 to 70,000, but you've got three schools in Boston. Why pick on Lawrence, Mr. Commissioner? Goodbye to my many friends. I enjoyed it. Life goes on and on. Goodbye to you all. It's been a pleasure serving with you for 12 years, and thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Vittorio So. Mr. Mali?
Good evening, honorable member of the Lawrence Public School Committee. When Honorable Mayor Lantigo, in rescuing 13,000 children of Lawrence Public School, went to the Commissioner Chester, arrival of Superintendent Raleigh brought new hopes for our children. We, as a citizen, need to remind you, our teachers and their wonderful union, three years before any collective bargaining and any contract. We need to support our teachers and their union. The union has created the teachers such as Mr. Mendez from Lawrence High School, a good family man that is on a medical leave. We support him. We wish him the best. Our teachers can go and complain to this podium or any podium in the era of the turnaround plan without any fear of retaliation and getting fired. Our teachers and union, they must know, in the era of the turnaround plan, positive changes in Lawrence Public School, moving more Level 1 schools, more graduation, more improvement in MCAS, only possible because of the greatest bond between our teachers and our citizens. Moving forward, our Lawrence Public School are in need of the greatest support of our teachers and their union. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mali. That concludes this November 12, 2013, regular session of the school committee. Good night, everyone.
Good night. Happy Thanksgiving to you.